Okay, good morning. We're going to call this meeting to order. This is a workshop this morning, but we'll open with public comment with anything that anyone would like to say about our budget workshop.
Good morning. My name's Marty Riel. I'm a resident of Boulder City. And I was looking at some of the pages from the budget, and I get confused on the transfers in and out. And I was wondering if, like, when you were, just take one section of it, like, I was particularly interested in utilities. And I was trying to balance the transfers in and out through the utilities. I know that, you know, from the administrative fund, they get charged, the individuals, the water, the, and the power, but then the transfers back and forth, I couldn't get to balance. If you could address that when you're going over that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I think, Mr. City Manager?
Good morning, Council. Sure wish I had a donut to go with my coffee this morning.
Me too. I was saying the same thing.
You know, I think somebody must have taken that plate full of donuts, you know, I don't know where they went, but...
They were sitting in front of the mayor when I left last night.
Okay. Well, our purpose this mor- in this morning's workshop is to present to you, the Council and Boulder City residents, a clear picture of the city staff's operating and maintenance budget program for the upcoming year. We will highlight staff's projected financial standing for all city funds based on conservative budgeted revenues and fiscally sound expenditures for this program year. Council members, you crafted and adopted the strategic plan goals in December of 2018. You took in community and staff feedback during your planning process. Your staff believes that the budget we will present to you this morning begins to responsibly meet many of these objectives. This year, we continue to review and revise the budget process and arrived at what is before you today for your review and approval. Please note that the conservative estimates of revenues fall well below the previous five-year trend, and new expenditures are being kept to a bare minimum. To start this process, we sat down with each department director to review the budgets, and then to determine if funding requests were feasible and appropriate. We were reflective, requiring each department to review the way we deliver services and build efficiency and effectiveness in their processes and programs. Directors had to ensure budget-neutral impact to the extent possible. We asked staff to consider the cost of service delivery, speaking of donuts. And it's appropriately placed next to the city manager and city attorney. I love that. Thank you, Mayor. We were reflective, requiring each department to review the way we deliver services and build efficiency and effectiveness in their processes and programs, and directors had to ensure budget-neutral impact to the extent possible. We asked staff to consider the cost of service delivery and where appropriate to look for efficiencies in savings. This led to a number of proposed changes to service delivery by bringing in outsourced services and allowing the work to be performed in-house. Doing so, the city will be able to capitalize on reimbursement activities such as grant administration and construction management charges. This budget also reflects the ongoing review of organizational effectiveness. There are new positions in this budget and new departments in an effort to reflect organizationally the efforts to achieve the goals set in the strategic plan. As a matter of fact, there are only four full-time employees that are not directly budget-neutral. The 2019-2020 program includes important strategic shifts in approaching how the city conducts its business. The directors will each present a brief overview of their programs and budgetary requests addressing their major goals and initiatives. Staffing is critical in achieving many of these objectives, as you will see this morning. Before we begin those presentations, I'd ask that the city finance director, Ms. Diane Pelletier, come up and briefly present some of the financial highlights in order to frame
Good morning.
Good morning.
Al stole some of my thunder. So I am going to be a little bit repetitive if we could start the PowerPoint. Okay. I think Al pretty much covered that one. We can go, okay. The council's strategic plan goals were the core of this year's budget process. Senior staff from all departments were challenged to reexamine how they deliver the services and build efficiencies in their budgets. We all strive to ensure budget-neutral impact to the greatest extent possible. During the directors' presentations, you will hear examples of bringing services in-house that were formerly outsourced, especially related to capital projects and construction management. These changes result in cost reductions in professional services and allow the city to receive reimbursements for these course, these costs. And RTC-funded projects will be a good example that'll be mentioned. And as you can see, this year's organizational structure includes Public Utilities Department, which is the newest department. A little bit on budget impacts. The general fund is approximately $2 million more than the 2018-19 budget for both revenues and expenditures, and the utility fund is approximately 1.4 million less than the 2018-19 budget. And utility capital projects in the upcoming budget at this time are not as high as this year's budget. In the current budget, there's approximately 10 million in capital projects, and since our two new directors have come on board, since the preliminary CIP was approved in November, projects are being reviewed, and we expect revisions, and we'll probably go over those at the April meeting. And in a little while, I will talk about the executive summary. I was going to mention that now, but I think it fits better later on in the presentation. So at this point, I'm going to let the directors say a few brief things about each of their departments for the upcoming year.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Keegan Littrell, Public Works Director. Just wanted to hit a couple of the highlights for what we're hoping to do this upcoming fiscal year. First thing is conducting a pavement maintenance program assessment. It's been 15-plus years since we've had an official assessment done on all of our roadways. By doing this, it's going to give us a direction to go of what streets really need repair or reconstruction. Jumping to engineering, we're requesting an engineering technician position. As Al and Diane had both mentioned, we're trying to bring more of the outsourced consultant construction management inspection projects in-house. This will allow us to be able to do not all, but a lot more of that stuff in-house. And previously, we've been underutilizing the RTC reimbursables for construction management alone. We're allowed to use up to 20% of the project cost as reimbursables from construction management. So we're going to try to fully utilize that in this upcoming year. In our street division, we're requesting a street division supervisor. As it is right now, our street division supervisor is also in charge of building maintenance. In building maintenance, we're proposing to add an additional three staff members. So we figured it would be best to try to split that supervisor role up into two different positions. By adding the street maintenance supervisor position, we're planning on offsetting that with more RTC funds for street maintenance projects. As I said, the building maintenance, we're planning on, or we're requesting three positions. We'd like to get someone that's specialized in HVAC systems, a plumber, and then just a general facilities maintenance worker. By doing that, we'll be able to do a lot of the projects that we are hiring contractors for. We'll be able to do that in-house and with those savings, and we'll in turn be able to do more projects. Another request is a reclassification of our department secretary to a public works analyst. That fits right in with our strategic plan goal A, achieve prudent financial stewardship about retaining high-quality employees. And she'll also be assisting with some of those street maintenance projects, so that'll also be reimbursable through RTC. On the next slide, I hit a few of the highlights for projects. I'd already mentioned the pavement maintenance program. We have an estimate of about $150,000 to get that assessment done. By us doing the in-house construction management of that, it could be reimbursable up to $30,000. Our annual crack and slurry seal program, using 20% of that, doing in-house construction management, we could have a savings of $100,000. Street construction, 1.4 million. Again, that would be $280,000 if we're doing our own construction management for that. Couple other projects, traffic signal update, that would also be RTC reimbursable. I have an asterisk beside that, there might be a possible scope change. We've been discussing some different ideas for that intersection before. It was just going to be updating the signal itself, but that's to come or to be determined. Hem and Way Phase Two, that would be another one that we can do construction management in-house. That is not reimbursable by RTC, but it would still be a savings by us doing the construction management ourselves. Another one I found under design, if we do the design in-house, that's a complete cost savings of that $160,000 we have estimated for that project. So when you total all those up, it's over $600,000 that we could save in doing construction management inspection by ourselves instead of outsourcing hiring consultants.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Dennis Porter, Utility Director. The donuts are here, so...
I tried to eat them all, but I was unsuccessful. So everybody can come get some donuts. In fact, Judge, why don't you pass them around? Anybody can take them.
So I'm just going to highlight each one of the funds quickly, and then let you know in two weeks, at the next council meeting, I'll be providing more of a detailed briefing on just the funds and utilities in general, just with regards to what I've observed and seen and analyzed in my first few months here. So stay tuned for that. On the administrative side, there are no new positions in any of the utilities or any of the funds. We are going to plan on reallocating an environmental compliance coordinator to a utility business analyst, and the purpose for that is, just kind of looking at those priorities, we've determined we can kind of spread some of that environmental compliance work out between me and others. And the priority needs to be on the development asset management program, analyzing those funds, working with our superintendents to help them develop maintenance management plans. And so we want to put more priority in that business analyst, and then just kind of assume the duties of environmental compliance with that person as well as others. In the administrative budget, we've included $250,000 for a rate study. I think everybody agrees it's time to take a new look, a revised look at the rates for each of the funds, and so we've included that in the budget as well. And of course, you'll see both today and in a couple of weeks that really the focus is on investing in the city's infrastructure and making sure we're doing a good job of planning for that, those investments. On the electrical budget side, we've included $200,000 to do a condition assessment. So we've done a really good job with some of the capital planning, especially on the transmission side. Now it's time to dive down into the distribution side, start looking at maintenance management plans, pole replacement programs, those things that need to be done on the electrical side. We have reduced the electrical utility budget about 4%, even with that $200,000, just looking at the different line items. And we do anticipate a slight increase in power purchases for the next couple of years. And then on the non-electric budget side, which is kind of the facilities and the in-house stuff, we're anticipating about a 12% decrease just across the board on assessing each one of the line items. Water, water budget, again, we've included $200,000 for a condition assessment. That's probably the biggest change in that budget. On the water purchase side, they have increased 3%, and they'll continue to increase 3% over the next few years. And then so that kind of equates to an overall budget increase of 2.8%. On the wastewater side, again, there's a surprise. We've got money in there for condition assessment. That also includes money for a sewer model. In this day and age, we can put hydraulic models together relatively inexpensively, and it's time for Boulder City to have a hydraulic model for the sewer system. That equates to about a 3% overall budget increase, just with that $200,000. For the most part, the rest of the budget stayed the same. And then finally, on the landfill, just looking at the projections for the solid waste services themselves, it looks like we can reduce that a couple hundred thousand, which represents about a 14% decrease. That's all I got. Who's next, Diane?
Me. Okay.
Good morning.
Hank, before you go, do we want to ask questions while we're going along here, or just wait till the end? Anybody?
I'm taking notes. I can do it either way.
All right. Keep going then.
Good morning, Tim Shea, the Chief of Police. In the police budget this year, I tied everything that we do into the new strategic plan. And in going through our budget and our expenditures, I started the budget process in September. I went through every expenditure that we've done since 2015. And because of that, we were able to sit down, and if you look at our final tally, with all the projects that go on, the increase in expenses, our salary increases, the police budget is only going up by, I think it's $20,000 from last year, it's down $20,000 from last year. We have two new positions in the police department. Those are not new positions. Those are positions that were vacated during the economic downturn, and we're required to keep a certain number of general fund police officer positions because of the more cop law. This is bringing us back up towards the total the city had in, before October of 2005. So we're still a little bit shy of that number, but we will be only one away at the end of these two positions. And the way they're coming on, their stagger started, so the full impact will not hit us actually until next year of their cost, because one will be in the academy for six And other than that, the same thing for the public safety communications budget. There is a request in there for adding a eighth dispatcher that we've been, the police department's been apparently asking for for about nine years. This position will be funded by taking one of our part-time positions, which is currently a 32-hour-a-week part-time position, and upgrading that to a 40-hour-a-week full-time position. So that keeps the cost down significantly, and that allows us to fully staff our public safety communications operation. On the animal control side, there's a very modest increase, and most of it's due to salary increases, increases in person, things like that. It's pretty much a maintenance budget. And that's all I have.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of Council. My name's Kevin Nicholson, the Fire Chief. Briefly, I'd like to go over the budget for the Fire Department this year. And although we are requesting some modest increases within the operational line items, those increases will be due to the ever-increasing cost of transport, EMS transport supplies. And it's also associated with us transitioning from doing in-house EMS billing to utilizing a third-party billing company. But with those increases that you see, they are budget-neutral. The revenue associated with EMS transport will more than pay for those increases that we're requesting. There are other specific accounts within our operational budget that we will be adjusting again this year to reflect the funding within each one of those accounts. But the biggest request that we have this year is an increase in staffing. During this fiscal year, we're requesting the addition of three firefighters that we'll utilize to extend our third rescue that we are utilizing now. And that third rescue is only in service during the daytime hours, which is 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. currently, and we are utilizing our reserves to staff that unit. So with these three firefighters, we'll be able to take the third rescue from just a 12-hour-a-day unit to a 24/7/365 unit. As I've discussed before with our EMS services here in Boulder City, our time on task is increasing, and basically, time on task is the time from where we receive that call to the time that that unit is back in service. As you know, some of our transports are required to go to the valley, and whenever one of our rescue goes into one of the valley hospitals, it's usually an hour or more before that unit is back here and in service. So the trends with the I-11 and some of the other call volume increases that we're seeing, that time on task is probably the biggest thing, that the benefit of having the third rescue in service is the community will notice that those service increases. So with those three personnel, we are still projecting that this request will be budget-neutral. We will be utilizing the reimbursements that's been discussed before from our Medicaid reimbursement program that we're participating in. Those overall costs associated with these three firefighters will be budget-neutral. We'll utilize that increase in revenue to pay for these three positions. In addition to that, I will be submitting for a SAFER grant, which is a staffing grant. If we're fortunate enough to get that SAFER grant, then it will actually help pay for these additional firefighters over a three-year period. So it will further reduce the initial impact of the cost of those personnel. And so with that, I'll end now. If you have any questions later on, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. As is the case every year during budget, all my items were cut. So really, the city clerk budget, it does vary greatly year to year due to elections, because we hold the elections in odd years. So there's a dramatic increase every other year, and then we take it back out. So there was a reduction of $100,000 in technical because our Muni code estimate was much lower than we anticipated, so that was removed. We had a very small increase for the E sign that we're going to be moving towards in the very near future. So that was just an increased cost of $6,000, but of course, that will pay for itself with As I mentioned, we took out $120,000 on the administrative side for election costs, but left approximately $30,000 in the budget in the event that we place any questions on the November 2020 ballot. As you know, I believe I sent you the invoice from the county to show you what those direct costs were, so we have to leave money in for that. And the rest was just reductions based on history, and we were able to remove some maintenance costs on equipment that's obsolete because we completed a very large project converting all of our microfilm, and we digitized it, and it is now in our Laserfish system. So we eliminated some equipment that we no longer needed, and we continue to move forward with digitizing all of the city's records and any permanent records getting in that into the system. So there's really not a lot of, all of our costs are hard costs.
Diane Pelletier, Finance Director. I have one of the positions requested in the new budget that is not budget-neutral. We were trying to create a budget manager position for the new year that would improve our budget processes and help us to implement the budget in a more programmatic way. And this budget manager position would also work closely with all the directors and all the departments throughout the year to take care of any problems that arise with budgeting shortfalls that they need to take care of. So this position would be hands-on throughout the year with all the directors to resolve any problems they have and play a big part in this process next year. In addition to that, we're going to perform an overall review and improvement of all the financial reporting, since I've been on board for about a year and three months now. There's a lot of things that we believe our financial software is not using that it could use, but that requires a lot of personnel hours to fix. So we're hoping that we can get that done in the upcoming year when we get up to full staffing. We are also in the process of establishing purchasing procedures with a new purchasing manager on board, and we're hoping this will ensure the city is receiving the best value in all the contracts they enter into and all the services they seek. And this last one, I'm afraid to say, but the goal is to repeat our most recent clean audit and keep that going. So that is my list of things to do in the upcoming year.
Mr. Hall?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council. The Parks and Recreation Department continues to provide high-quality, cost-effective recreation opportunities for all residents of Boulder City. And for fiscal year 2020, the Parks and Rec Department is not requesting any additional fund. In an effort to achieve prudent financial stewardship, as in our strategic plan, the Parks and Rec Department has repurposed funding totals to accommodate the needs of individual 13-divisional budgets. In fact, the Parks and Rec Department is requesting 146,000 less. Let me repeat that, less than in the current fiscal year 2019 budget. Well, investing in infrastructure is really important to us with the downturn. We hadn't been able to take care of our existing facilities. So what we want to do is there's going to be some improvements to the golf courses, as specified last night. We're repairing some waterfalls and some stream beds at Boulder Creek that have sprung leaks. We're developing this golf course, Frisbee Golf Course, Ms. Levitt, at Boulder Creek to increase revenue at Boulder Creek, and that should be a nice change for people. We're going to start the process to replace the 50-year-old irrigation system at Boulder City. It was put in 1970. It wastes a lot of water. It needs to be replaced. We're going to be replacing with up-to-date valve and head system, and you can control a lot more water. It'll save us a lot of money in the long run. The goal is being, is to reduce water at the course. We'd like to do a Bootleg Canyon feasibility study. We'd like to explore the possibility of Bootleg Canyon becoming a destination park, attracting visitors from a variety of activities. We also, we bring a lot of people in for the zip line, and we're so close to Lake Mead, we have a lot of things that we offer in outdoor recreation, and I think this would really help the situation. The project would enhance the services offered to our community, improve economic vitality for our community, and invest in the infrastructure at Bootleg Canyon. I spoke last night in my presentation to City Council regarding park improvements. We're going to be doing some work at Hem and Way and Oasis Parks, wind screens replacement on tennis courts, gazebo repairs at Veterans Memorial Park, surfacing the outdoor pickleball court at ABC Park, and also other infrastructure purchase and installation of shade structures at Whalen Baseball Field and Veterans Memorial Park. And another change for fiscal year 2020 is the addition of a surcharge, golf course surcharge at Boulder Creek Golf Course, much like the one at the municipal golf course. And the funds in the surcharge account would... And the funds in the surcharge account would be used towards future golf course improvements like those mentioned previously. So I'll be around to answer any questions that you may have after the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Members of Council. Steve Morris, your City Attorney. With respect to the City Attorney's Office, the notable change there for this oncoming budget is a change in position. In the spirit of our strategic plan to maintain and keep quality employees, our current paralegal is actually a licensed attorney in the state of Arizona. We have encouraged her to sit for the bar here in Nevada, which she has applied to do. So this position we are proposing would be funded halfway through the fiscal year in anticipation that she will actually have passed the bar examination at that point, and we'll have those results back. While it is not budget-neutral immediately, it is our intention that it will become so down the road. We are very satisfied with our contract services, prosecutorial services at this time with Mr. Gary Booker, but looking into the future and down the road, there is an opportunity here that, again, that we feel strongly about and hope to achieve in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Members of the City Council. Michael Mays, your Community Development Director. The Community Development proposed budget is focused on the successful implementation of the recently adopted 2025 Strategic Plan action items. I just want to go over a couple of highlights for your consideration. It includes the elimination of our full-time building inspector position and instead, the utilization of a third-party inspection service to provide these functions for the community. We believe that it will accomplish two goals: continued improvement in customer service as well as being fiscally responsible in the long term. In addition, we're proposing a new position for community development. This would be a historic preservation position that will help to implement the community's goals with respect to historic preservation efforts. You will see an increase in our proposed professional services budget. This is a reflection of a focus on several areas, including economic development, code updates, and conducting a historic preservation survey. Though there will be this increase, we believe that through projected revenue increases as well as personnel savings, those costs will be offset by that increase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. My name is Victor Miller. I'm the judge here in Boulder City, municipal judge, and also Justice of the Peace. We have, our budget for the municipal court is essentially the same with a couple of changes. One of the primary changes is the increase in fines and fees that are projected because, as the chief mentioned, the police department is now close to full staffing, and their work reflects on the work that's referred to the court. So our caseload is growing due to the efforts of the police department and their public safety efforts, and also with the I-11. And so our caseload is approaching levels when it was the highest, I think, in 2011. In the past few months, they've been at those levels. And as a result of that, obviously, the revenues, fines increase because of that, so you'll see an increase in fines and fees for the city through that process. We've also asked for a full-time deputy city marshal or court martial, and we've tried to cover those functions over the past several years with part-time marshals, but it's become just increasingly difficult to either get them hired or, once we get them hired, to keep them because with the increased police presence in the valley because of the more cops initiative and tax, and also with the increase that came about because of the Raider Stadium, more cops, there's a lot of jobs for post-certified individuals full-time, and so they would rather work full-time in one of these other agencies than work 10 to 20 hours a week in Boulder City. So one of the things that we've, to cover that or to make sure that we have the security necessary in the courthouse, is to get a full-time marshal to replace at least three of those positions that we can't fill. This marshal, we've been trying to fill this need with some armed security, which is actually quite expensive, and they cannot perform all of the functions that we need covered because they're not post-certified, so they can do, you know, some security, but they can't do the actual enforcement part of the job. So if we, this part, or this full-time marshal will give us the opportunity additionally for weekend coverage for our alternative sentencing people that we monitor. It's a secret that's not so secret with those that we monitor, that the weekends, they're less likely to be drug-tested, or they're less likely to be visited at home, and so when they catch a way, the mice will play, and so we want to put a stop to that. And also, this will provide the adequate security that we need at the courthouse for our staff and our customers that come into our court. That position is funded, the proposal is funded half through the general fund and half through some of the court assessments. We have, one of the jobs of the deputy court martial will be to do warrant collection efforts, and so by statute, we can use money from our collection fund that we collect every time somebody gets a warrant, there's money goes into a fund, so we can use half of their pay allotted to that. So it's not a large of impact on the general fund as you'd expect. And also, because of the increase in caseload, back in six, eight years ago, we had a full-time clerk office assistant who was processing the citations as they come in. We didn't need that as the caseload went down, so we transferred that to a part-time position. Now we're back up to those levels again, so it's anticipated if they stay at those levels in next January, we'd like to bring that to full-time because frankly, the clerks over there are, it's, the water's creeping up, and we don't want them to drown because of the functions that they have to perform. So essentially, it stays the same with the request for those two positions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Council, as the City Manager, I also have a budget, and amazingly, somehow, I lost $200,000 out of the City Manager's budget. I don't know who's running that particular department, but maybe we need to take another closer look. During a recent visit to Carson City, numerous lawmakers indicated that having a stronger voice and a familiar face in government affairs would actually be beneficial to our community. There's potential for bills that could have a positive fiscal impact on the city of Boulder City, so having someone on staff who can regularly discuss and lobby on behalf of the city would help generate revenues potentially and/or protect the city's interests when there are bills out there that might perhaps maybe have unintended negative consequences to our community. The creation of the Communications and Government Affairs Department will be more accurately reflective structure and organization and clarify funding and responsibilities of various functions, to include, in part, acting as Government Affairs Director to submit, review, and advocate for state and federal laws and funding and proposals that have an impact to Boulder City. So in this particular request, although it's not a new position, I am requesting that a new department be stood up called the Communications and Government Affairs Department. So it's not a new position, but it's a change in classification of the Communications Manager position to Communications and Government Affairs Department. The second change would be the creation of Administrative Services Department. This will more accurately reflect the structure of the organization and clarify funding and responsibilities of various functions, to include, in part, information technology, the municipal airport, policy review and development, and human services. This particular request, the Administrative Services Department is budget-neutral, as there will be no additional positions and no additional expenditures. There will be no increases in salaries or benefits in any of the positions that are currently involved with this particular function. Next slide. So here you can see, in summary, that the City Manager's budget has been reduced or reallocated by $200,000. IT reduced about $150,000 from the not needing to have to purchase any new additional equipment. Also, in personnel, increased funds will be distributed from the City Manager's budget. In airport, there's no change there. And then the Communication Government Affairs budget, that budget was plus-ed up by the City Manager's budget, so I took some of the funds out of the City Manager and just repurposed it in this particular department to ensure that we have coverage as well. So with that, next, I think it's HR will be next, correct?
HR is next, and while Bryce is getting ready, I'm just going to cover this slide about budget impacts. All funds are in a positive territory. There's a staff increase, which Bryce is going to elaborate on, from 184 full-time equivalents to 197.8 full-time equivalents. There's a scheduled 2.375 salary increase for most employees, which I guess was originally 3%, but due to increases in retirement contributions. This is reducing the salary increases for the employees because they are sharing in the cost of the increase from the PERS. There's 2.65 million for capital projects from the general fund, which right now, at this point, is being suggested for the upcoming year. 5.42 million for capital projects from the utility fund, and 4.49 million for capital projects from the capital improvement fund. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bryce to talk about full-time equivalents.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Bryce Bolt, Administrative Officer. This morning, I'll talk about full-time equivalent position count, and then how that count is distributed between department and functions, and then the requests that department has made and estimated costs thereof. So what we're looking at here is a bar graph. It shows FTE count for previous years. What's different here in those little hats on the last two? There, we had not previously counted our part-time PERS-able employees. So our part-time PERS-ables are employees that work more than 20 hours a week but less than 40 hours a week, and we and they make contributions to PERS, Nevada Public Employee Retirement System. And we've got 11 such employees, and they work about 32 hours a week. So we count them at about 80%. So 11 employees equates to 8.8 for your FTE count, so full-time equivalents is what we're trying to get, an accurate count of that, which we've not really previously done. We counted more heads than we did positions, so this will be a more accurate count of our full-time equivalent positions. So that's what those two little bars are. We put it on for this year, and then we also added it on for next year, too. And we can go to the next slide, or I can click it, I suppose. Okay, we're there. So this is employee counts by department and by function. We can see that the Finance Department has one of those part-time PERS-able employees, and also that Finance is requesting a new FTE, as well as City Attorney. I'll have more information on those as we go along. On this slide, the police have a part-time PERS-able position that they'd like to upgrade or convert to a full-time dispatcher. Fire is requesting six new positions and proposing the elimination of three. And Public Works is requesting five new FTEs and one reclass upgrade, as Keegan mentioned. So we come to our total, and if you kind of run these sideways, we have 176 FTEs, 8.8 FTEs when we count our part-time PERS-ables. And there are 17 requests for new positions and four eliminations, giving us an increase of 13 FTE count, which would... So now I want to go through estimated costs. So these few slides will give you estimated costs. These costs include salary, benefits, workers' comp, uniform allowance, and really any cost that I could think of associated with the position. The Police Department is requesting upgrade to a part-time PERS-able dispatcher to a full-time dispatcher. Let's bring the number of full-time dispatchers to eight. So you can see there that it says, what are part-time PERS-able, and the cost over that to come to a full-time dispatcher would be about 58, 58 grand for this, in this fiscal year. And then the two police officers, as the chief mentioned, one is at a half-year and another one's at a three-quarter year, so those costs, based on that timeframe, come up at about 140. And then dispatcher, he has an upgrade that he's requested with respect to his dispatch supervisor to take on more additional duties under Police Support Services Manager, and that cost, that upgrade would cost about 4,600 bucks. On the next one, we'll move to Fire. These staffing requests are budget-neutral. This flattens out his organization and provides continuity of supervision and addresses our increasing staffing needs. And really, I just washed out his increases with, in large part, the elimination of his three FTEs that he's proposing eliminate. And the City Attorney, those costs, they show at six months, just because it's not anticipated to fill that position until January 2020. So those are six-months costs there. This is Municipal Court, and these costs, as the judge said, are split between general fund and court. And actually, I could probably bring these down a little bit because if we're not going to fill those part-time marshals at all, I don't know if we eliminated his budget for those part-time marshals, do you know, did we? Oh, well, these costs are pretty accurate here. So Public Works looking at five new and an upgrade. So here's the costs, and these are full costs, other than the upgrade is really beyond what a department's secretary costs, but as the director said, anticipates offset by reduction in internal services and moreover, reimbursement from the outside agencies such as RGC, and believes these will be budget-neutral. So utilities, they've really repurposed a lot of funds to cover this position, more than enough, and they're looking for an upgrade. So the Environmental Compliance Coordinator to upgrade that to this utilities business analyst would cost about 35K, and, but again, reallocation of funds, so this is also a budget-neutral position by that department. Parks and Recreation, looking for a couple upgrades. They... They, he also has reallocated funds, so that these two upgrades would be budget-neutral. He'd stay within. In fact, as he pointed out, would decrease his budget. But these are Recreation Coordinator and upgrading it to a Parks and Rec Manager. And then we have one senior custodial worker, and I think probably four custodians. And really, we're running that operation seven days a week custodial, so he'd like to upgrade one of his custodials to a senior, so he'd have these lead elements much more distributed throughout the week. And again, budget-neutral. The Finance Department and the Budget Manager, that's your full cost for a year, and this is a position that was mentioned by Diane. This very unique position is at city planner level, when we looked at the duties and responsibilities that would be anticipated. So that's where that dollar amount comes from. And when I look at the, you know, the knowledge, skills, and abilities as articulated and what we put together in a job spec, we come up similar to a planner. And that is also the one that Michael mentioned, of course. So I think that's all for my slides, on costs at least. And I'm going to quickly sit down before anyone asks me any questions. Thank you.
Diane Pelletier, Finance Director. This is the home stretch. There's no one after me, so I'm just letting you know. I'm going to go over the major budget items as we see it right now, which would be for the upcoming year, the Utility Rate Study, which I think is going to be very important, the Utility Condition Assessment Study, the Historic Preservation Survey, which falls into the objectives of the Strategic Plan, Wastewater Master Plan, and Pavement Management Assessment. All of those costs are listed here. And then we also have Building Permit Review and Inspection Services. We don't know what the cost savings is going to be for that or the cost, but that is another important project for the upcoming year. And previously outsourced engineering services will now be brought in-house, so that will create some savings. That's a notable item for the new year, but we don't have an exact number of what those savings will be. So speaking a little bit about projected revenue assumptions, all the revenues are very conservative for the upcoming year, because I would rather come back and tell you we had more revenues than less. So we were very careful in reviewing the revenues and didn't, you know, we didn't lower it to the point of not being reasonable, but we didn't want to increase it too high. So they're very conservative. The largest increase is lease revenues, which make up the largest revenue increase for the 2019-20 budget. And the Tech Run, one and two, is the new lease, providing 1.2 million increase in lease revenue. And that's a 50-year lease. So that'll give us increased revenues for quite a few years to come. This next, next chart shows a balanced budget for the upcoming year. This might be a good time to just ask you to, when you have a chance, review the executive summary. And in particular, page 11 in that executive summary has a, has numbers for numbers people. There's a lot of nice pictures for pictures people. But we have all the numbers on this page, and it comes down to the bottom line of the revenues over expenditures for the upcoming year, and that's at 1.7 million. So it's a balanced budget, but they, we're projecting revenues over expenditures of 1.7 million. What we're proposing to do is take that money, in addition to some use of fund balance of 855,000, to put towards the capital improvements funded by the general fund next year. And historically, I believe, the general fund has contributed about 2.5 million a year to capital projects. So this is how we propose to use that. I understand there's been some discussion about paying down debt, and I don't want to go too deep into that at this point, because we have a lot of rate studies that we're going to have done in the new year. And we're also going to be doing some financial analysis at looking at, you know, possible ways we can pay down debt. But I would suggest, or strongly suggest, that we hold off on making any commitments to using general fund dollars to pay down debt, or utility fund dollars to pay down debt, until we do these studies. Next slide is one slide that really doesn't need any words. It's the tax rate comparison for Boulder City compared to the rest of the state. Boulder City residents enjoy the lowest tax rate of all the cities in the state of Nevada. So they're the first, that's the first block on their 26 cents. The next slide is the revenue pie percentages for the general fund. And if you have the new Blue Book Executive Summary, and you have last year's red cover Executive Summary, you can open those pie charts side by side and see that there's very little change in percentages of the allocation. So the revenue pie percentages are very similar to last year's pie chart in the executive summary. And as mentioned earlier, leases account for the largest increase in revenues at about 1.4 million. And where the general fund money goes, the expense pie chart percentages are also very similar to last year's pie chart. Public Works has the largest increase from 2018, from 14% to 16%. And this is the result of bringing formerly outsourced services to be done in-house, as Keegan Lutrell, our Public Works Director, explained earlier. And now we're going to talk a little bit about the utility funds. That's a lot different from the Red Book, because the Red Book had everything in one pie. So in this new book, we have separated out each utility. And I'm going to try to explain the transfers in and out, so that they make sense. So the first pie chart is Utility Administrative Fund. And where that money comes from is from all, I call them the children funds, electric, water, wastewater, and landfill. All those funds are the children of this administration fund, and therefore must be supported. The children must support this fund. It can't be supported from the general fund. So this is, it's completely funded by the four utilities. The only miscellaneous slice that reduces the children's cost is the interest income earned by the utility fund on their fund balance. And the functions performed by the utility administration fund are their central services, the billing and collection. So when people come in and pay their bills, that department is funded, but it's part of this utility administration fund. And they collect the revenues, the charges for all the services. And capital projects, which benefit all the utility funds, are paid out of this. And the transfer to general fund is about $1 million a year, and that's for the services that the general fund performs for the utility funds, which is payroll, accounts payable, purchasing. So that's what that is. It's a pretty, pretty basic services that are performed by the administration fund for the four individual funds. Next slide is the electric utility, and where that money comes from. So there's basically three components that make this up. There's the charge for services, which is projected to be 18.5 million. There's miscellaneous revenue, which are, just what it says, miscellaneous revenue, could be late fees, things like that. And there's also transfers in from the capital improvement fund. That transfers in from the capital improvement fund, that slice of the pie is part of the 1.59 million that was voter-approved capital project funding from the Trac 349 Storybook Homes sale. So that's an 8% slice of this pie. So that money gets transferred in to the electric fund. And that's determined by the projects. So the Keegan Lutrell and Dennis Porter look together, they look at the upcoming projects and determine what the priorities are. And they're reviewing that now. So this, some of these pieces of pie may change, but at this point in time, or actually last year, when we were trying to allocate the voter-approved funding that we're allowed to use for utility projects, it was decided that 1.59 million would be given to the utility fund in order to do their capital projects. I hope that makes sense. Well, you can ask questions after. So I'll keep going, because it's the same sort of idea for each fund. So where the electric utility fund money goes, they go to operations, power purchases, non-electric, which Dennis mentioned, that's internal services performed, like electric repairs that could happen, be needed here or somewhere else. So his folks will do that. And then there's a transfer to the administration fund. So that's the portion that the electric fund pays for the supervision provided by the administration fund. And we'll go to the water utility fund. And the water utility fund money comes from charges from services, and next year that's projected to be 10.25 million. They also get money from the infrastructure tax. And there's a transfer coming in from the voter-approved capital improvement funds of 1.5 million. And where their money goes, and they pretty much, all their, all their money is spoken for, for the most part. They have very little fund balance left after they pay their operations, water purchases, the capital projects, which is almost fully funded by the voter-approved monies. Debt service is a big chunk to them. And then they also have to pay their share of the supervision to the administrative And the wastewater comes from customer charges and transfers, and they're getting a little bit of money from the voter-approved bond, fund. And again, their costs, it's pretty much the same process for everybody. It goes to operations, capital projects. They have a small amount of capital projects at this time for next year, and they have to transfer their cost of supervision from the administration fund. And then the landfill fund, which is really basic, they have their customer charges, and they have to use a little bit of their fund balance to meet their operating costs. And part of that is because right now there's a position which is vacant in this budget. So if, once the, all the settling is done with the positions, this, this may be, may not need any money from its fund balance and may be self-sufficient. And their money is pretty much for operations, contractual services, and capital projects, and they pay a small amount to the administration fund. The last slide is the budget adoption schedule, and I hate to say this, but I have to change that. I was hoping to get this budget approved by the council by May 14th, but the state had other things in mind. NRS statutes won't allow us to do a public hearing unless we do it either on the third Monday in May or before May 30th. So that locks us into approving the budget on May 28th. So that will have to be a change. And finally, I want to plug this executive summary again, because it, I think, is full of really good information. If you're not a finance geek, you might enjoy looking at this more than looking at the book. And I also want to shout out to a couple people, all the directors. We've worked very closely together. We've tried to provide each other information throughout this process. I think there was a lot of learning on both sides. Keegan Lutrell, Dennis Porter, worked very well with me. I think both of us are learning together a lot of things that last year was a whirlwind, and this year we're just really analyzing things. So they've come a long way quickly and have a lot of good ideas. I want to thank Brock Armentraut. I kind of dared him to do better than last year, and I think this is better. And I love the color. I said, you're not going to top this next year, but I don't know, he says he will. And Angela Mannen, she is the Account Analyst, and she was working with me throughout this process, has done a lot of good things that you don't see, because it's connecting all the numbers together. So if, I doubt it, but if we have to change something, we probably can do it easier this year than last year. So with that, we'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Great presentations, and appreciate each of, each of you for preparing for that. You're slowly turning all of us into finance geeks, what we're resistant. Council, questions, comments? Mr. Schuman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Diane. Great presentation. Let's see. I'm just going to kind of give my overview of that presentation without going too deep into my questions. Diane, first, can you just review the schedule, or maybe, Mr. City Manager, just when we're going to meet again and talk about this, or what the plan is? Is the rest of our meetings going to be city council meetings, or are we doing any more workshops? Just curious.
At this point in time, we were hoping to have the second workshop at the first council meeting in April. And during that meeting, you know, if there's any suggested changes from today, we would implement those. There might be a few things that we missed that we'll probably change, and we could go over that at that time. And also, we'll be talking about any capital improvement changes. So I think there will be some of that. In fact, I know there will be, so we'll be highlighting that. But as for, and we're doing a meeting on this coming Monday with the citizens to go over the budget. So those are the only planned meetings at this time.
Okay, thanks.
Is that, so that, sorry to interrupt.
That's all right.
Just to clarify, is that, you said at a city council meeting? So is that the tentative budget meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so no other scheduled workshops at this point?
Not with the council.
Okay.
All right. So first of all, I really think we're in a good position with the city finances. It really feels like that year over year. So from a, from a general level, looking year over year, it is very impressive. Coming into this budget session, I looked at a lot of the new hires and a lot of the increase in employees. And at first, I was rather alarmed, but after today, I really felt a lot more comfortable with that. In fact, in some departments, very impressed by the ability to bring things in-house and offset those costs, especially Public Works. So when you, when you see it, and the Fire Department, and I'll go into that in a minute, but when you see those, when you see those increased positions offset and budget-neutral, and you hear these, these things, I just think they're wonderful for the city and just an amazing way to create efficiency, save money, and just, just smart budgeting and smart financing. It's, it's very impressive. And I appreciate that. On the utility fund, Diane, is it, are we in a position where we're not, where we're a self-sustaining fund now, and we're not subsidizing it?
Together, the utility funds are strong. And apart, they all can take care of each other, but some of them have more trouble making ends meet than others.
But, but in whole, we're now a self-sustaining utility fund?
Yes.
Which is, you know, something to really, you know, feel proud about, because when we first, when I first got on council four years ago, it wasn't like that. We were, we're really subsidizing the heck out of it, and we had to make some obviously tough choices with, with rates and with things like that to get this fund into a situation where it was actually legal to be, you know, a self-sustaining fund. So I feel like we're there, and I'm happy to see that we're doing a rate study. I know it's expensive, $250,000 rate study, as well as these other studies. And, you know, this is something that's going to drive the mayor probably a little crazy, because he hates to spend money on, on studies. And so do I, quite frankly. Over the years, we've put some money out for some studies and, you know, that's And, you know, it's always hard to spend $200,000 on a study. But I do believe that the condition, that the ones that are proposed in the Utility Fund are good. The $250,000 rate study, condition assessment, water condition assessment, sewer modeling. I believe that, you know, in the long run, those studies, if they're done properly and we can rely on that information that comes from them, that we can, over the long term, create more efficiencies within those departments to actually save money in the long run. So, I am glad that we're doing those studies and that we have the money and the budget to do those. We're actually in a very fortunate position right now as a city. So...
Councilmember, if I may just interrupt.
Yeah.
And I just want to just clarify a point here. Your concern and what you expressed was whether or not the Utility Funds individually or collectively as a whole, if they're in a good position. When you look at it from an operations and maintenance standpoint, that is probably a true statement. What concerns me is that without knowing the true condition of the infrastructure of all of the utilities, I am a little concerned about whether or not structurally and whether or not the revenues are where they need to be in order to be able to fully fund a good maintenance and upgrade program to ensure that our infrastructure, our utilities' infrastructure, can in fact sustain themselves. The other thing that I would also remind the Council is that, as you saw on the slides here, there is transfers coming in from other revenue sources, not from utility revenues, in order to currently fund capital projects that are part of this Enterprise Fund Utilities, whether it's wastewater, water, or electric. Typically, utilities pay for itself. So, any funding that occurs outside of the revenues is in essence being supported by other revenue sources. Certainly, it's a policy choice of the Council to make. But ultimately, the whole cruts of having an Enterprise Fund is to act like, look like, independent business operations, which pays for all of its costs. So, that's operations, maintenance, and capital as well. I just want to make sure that, fading away there. Just want to make sure that, in fact, that we're clear that going forward, I'm not as comfortable saying that we are completely in a sustainable position when it comes to the Enterprise Funds, Utility Funds, as it relates to infrastructure and the funding of all future infrastructure needs across the utilities.
Thank you so much for clarifying that. And that's a great point that you made. The aging utility infrastructure is always something that we're chasing after, or is chasing us, one or the other. So, I'm glad you brought that up. And Public Works, there's $600,000 in construction management savings. I just think that's outstanding. Police, totally revenue-neutral. Glad you're getting an eighth dispatcher. That's been forever much-needed. The way we're adding the two new positions is fine. Very impressed with Fire. So happy to see that we're getting the third rescue in place. We need that as a city. That time on task, that's probably one of the most important things to a community that there is. That's how long it takes for somebody to get to you in an emergency. It's adding three new firefighters there and completely budget-neutral with the reimbursements from EMS. So, I just can't say enough about how impressed I am with the way that was budgeted and thought about and planned out and fully support our police and fire with what they need to do there. And the Clerk's Office, I was just wondering how long it's going to take to digitize everything. I know we're kind of going through a process. But like, is there a light at the end of that tunnel where it's just, okay, we're digitized? Because I know that'll be big savings overall.
It will probably not be done in my lifetime.
Okay. All right. Good to know.
Yeah. Our part-time office assistant is doing quality control right now, going through everything. But, you know, we have talked about bringing someone in to just prep files and get it in. Every department's supposed to be doing their own. But, you know, it's just a very, it's just a very labor-intensive process. But it's always the goal.
Okay. Just wondering. Finance, you know, the Budget Manager position. I'm interested to hear a little bit more about job description of the Budget Manager. But, I mean, you kind of went over it. We don't need to. It's not a question I have right now. But that's an interesting position. Community development, interesting thing to me there was that's the one department where we're saying, "Let's go out to a third party to save money," where some of these, most of the other departments were saying, "Let's bring it in-house to save money." But we have gone over this, Mr. Mays, in our briefings. And I think we've talked about it enough to understand that there is savings by going third-party rather than keeping that in-house. I'm sure you would agree with that. Or you wouldn't be making that recommendation. At the Court, I'm just wondering, is the Breaking the Cycle Drug Program still funded at the same levels? And are we good there?
We're good, yeah. We checked with that actually yesterday, with going through the budget to make sure that that funding was there. So, yes, we're...
Good. That's an outstanding program. And stuff definitely one we need to continue supporting. Fully support the Marshall position as well. I've seen how that works down there. So, that'll be good. I guess that's about all for today, you know, for me. We might go a little deeper in other meetings. And looking forward to the process. And overall, just very pleased with the way this budget session was presented. Very pleased with the executive summary. You're right. I like the cover. I like the pages. I like the way it reads. The 1.7 million positive fund balance at the end of the year is something great to be focused on. The conservative way that we've estimated revenues and expenses this year, it seems like, it seems like an easier budget season than we've had in the past. And I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. McManus?
I also think, you know, the presentation was very good. I like the breakdowns on many of these things. There are a couple of things that I would like to see when we talk about these offsets and, you know, doing the in-house. For some time in the city, I think there was an effort to put things outside the city. In other words, pay contractors to do work for us. I've seen that be suggested for decades now. And I don't think that that's ever been the way to do it. I think our city employees can do things cheaper and better than if we go out to private companies that have to make a profit. So, I support doing that. But I would like to see, I know, Mr. Luttrell, when you talked about an HVAC specialist and a plumber, I would just like to see figures on what we're paying for those services now to make that comparison to what an additional staff person would take in payment. And same with the other positions. When we talk about how we're going to save money, I would like to see how that's being done, how that's being accomplished. So, that's across the board, not just Public Works. Something that I had asked for last year was to have a showing of how we are budgeting the lease revenue out to the various areas. I don't see that in this budget proposal. It looks to be where that lease revenue is coming into the General Fund and just being treated as any other source of revenue. So, I'm disappointed in that. I think it's important we get a handle on that lease revenue so we know where that money's going. By charter, the division of that money is 20% to our Capital Improvement Fund, 20% to the General Fund, and 60% left up to Council to make decisions on how to spend that. Some of that money does go into our Utility Fund. That was always the promise of that lease revenue is that that money would be used to make up for the poor decisions that have been made in the past, to take reserve money out of that Utility Fund. You know, we're constantly in the hole for 20 years of trying to catch up and get our infrastructure back where it should be. So, as far as the money that goes from the leases to the Capital Improvement Fund, that was always the intent, was to try and get our infrastructure back where it needs to be. I think finally, we are getting some of these projects done. The B.C. TAP, I know there was concerns, discussion about when that's going to be completed. Apparently, there were some issues with that. You know, that's a major expenditure that's been out there for a number of years that has now been accomplished. At least, the transformer is there and being worked on. The 69 KV line, that contract, I guess, is being held up or something. But at least, the contract was put out there and that work started. These are things that haven't been done in the past, that have been talked about, have been said to be critical, and are now actually being accomplished. So, I think that's a very good thing. But I would like to see that accounting of where these lease funds are going specifically. And I think that's important to the future of the city when we have a revenue source like that, that we know exactly where that money's going. As far as the schedule of workshops, I really do believe we need a separate session like this rather than a council meeting. We've now had these numbers for five days, six days since last Thursday. And as wonderful of a job as you did putting us all together, it's a lot of material to try and digest. So, I do believe we need another workshop to be able to go over this in more detail. You pointed out correctly the low property tax rate that we have here in Boulder City. Again, that's a benefit of the lease revenues that was promised when that land was being used out there. I believe the figure you said the increase was 1.8 million from the previous year in lease revenue. Is that correct?
1.4.
1.4. That's great. And we're anticipating more. But I'm not sure that we're spending that wisely or forecasting the expenditure of that wisely. If that's new money, and we're seeing, I believe your projection was 4% increase in the C-tax revenue, probably flat on the property taxes. You know, to me, that's money that we should be putting towards these capital projects that have not been done in the past. Also, being able to keep our utility rates at a level that people actually get the benefit we always enjoyed here in Boulder City by receiving very inexpensive power from Hoover Dam. And we seem to have lost track of that, that we get a rate from Hoover Dam that most other entities can't touch. And yet, we see rate increases having occurred. I think, again, that utility money must be, or excuse me, the lease money must be used for our utility rates to keep the advantage we've always had here in Boulder City. With regard to the Fire Department, again, I would like to see some specifications on the number of increase, or the amount of increase we've seen in calls, or time at each call, to see why we're looking at these new positions. Are you, the offset that you had projected, Chief, is that to eliminate the reserve positions that we have currently?
No. We'll maintain the same number of reserves. And they'll be doing the same thing. Is basically what the three personnel will do, will allow it to go from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. to a 24/7 operation. So, currently, I'm using the reserve program to do that 12 hours. But by adding the three personnel, it will enable me to use those same number of reserves plus the three career personnel to go to a 24/7, 365 operation. And the increased revenue from the Medicaid reimbursement program will completely offset the cost of those three personnel.
And in addition to the three firefighter positions, you're looking to create three captain positions?
Basically, it's a reorganization with the recent retirement of the Division Chief. And with another position that I currently have, it's basically allocating, eliminating those positions and creating the other three positions, which the offset of those costs would be budget-neutral. It's just basically reorganizing the middle management of the department.
Okay. So, what would be the total number of captains at, if this goes forward?
It'd be a total number of six.
Six captains.
And eliminating the Division Chief and the EMS Coordinator position.
Okay. And again, I'm not picking on you individually. I'm picking on you as part of a group. I'm concerned that where a lot of the positions we're adding gets us top-heavy. And while the firefighter positions, again, I would like to see the numbers on the increase, the number of calls, and the time being spent. I'm just concerned that we're getting management-heavy and not worker-heavy. So, that's just something to consider. But perhaps getting those numbers from you would help understand that better. And again, not to pick on you individually, but everything that's been said collectively. We've heard the I-11 brought up a few times today. I would like to know what increases due to that I-11 opening. We're still only, what, about six, seven months into that having occurred? Judge Miller referred to it for the load on the courts. You've referred to it for the EMS responses. And I believe Chief Shea can say the same, that his officers are probably spending time out there. If that's the case, that I-11 runs through Boulder City. But that is a regional highway, interstate. It actually received an interstate designation. That shouldn't fall specifically on Boulder City just because the length of it happens to be within our territory. That's a federal program. It was built by the state and the county. If we're experiencing a lot of increases in our expenses to service that roadway, I think it's incumbent on us to go and look at other sources, whether it be county, state, or federal, to say, "Look, you all built this here. And you're putting a burden on a community of 16,000 to be able to ask for financial assistance from those others." So, again, this isn't specific to your department. But if we're seeing a financial impact of that sort, we need to start looking at other levels of government to say, "You can't let this burden fall just on us."
Yeah. And specifically for that, we always look for other revenue sources. But usually, whenever you have a state highway, county highway, interstate, normally within the country, whatever jurisdiction that those roadways fall within, it is the responsibility of that jurisdiction to serve and protect those roadways. There's not a lot of revenue sources associated with interstates and/or US or county roads. US 95, US 93, the I-11, all fall within the jurisdictional boundaries of the Boulder City Fire Department. Therefore, if there's an incident that occurs on those roadways, we receive the call and we respond. As far as the call volume on I-11, early on, the call volume was very high. We had several fatalities. Thank goodness, everyone's getting used to the traffic flow there. So, those major incidents have reduced. But it's the addition of the total mileage of that road which is creating those increases for us. It's the likelihood of incident that could occur that creates those incidents or those situations. As far as the staffing level for us with the third rescue, even before the I-11, we were maximizing our ability to serve the community. we were maximizing our ability to serve the community. When I talk about not, not only response time, the ability for us to respond to an incident quickly, but it's that time on task. When we go to an incident and one of our rescues has to transport to, say, U M C or one of the valley hospitals, it's the amount of time that that unit is gone. So before, we only had two rescue units. We were experiencing calls, it's, the, the total call volume for the department has been fairly stable. But what has increased is what is called back-to-back calls, which means I have a call, that unit has to transport, and then while that unit's gone, I get another call. Now I have the second rescue that's on a call, and then they have to respond to the valley. Now I have no more EMS transport units to take care of that next call. Those are the calls that have been increasing for the department over the last several years, and that's, that's why we've been discussing these needs. And the I-11 was just another impact that could affect those back-to-back calls, or that time on, uh, call, uh, timeframe that we are experiencing. So adding that third rescue provides that additional unit here to say that now, we could have back-to-back-to-back calls, and we still have an EMS transport unit to take care of the citizens and visitors here in Boulder City. So that's kind of the philosophy. By all means, I'll put together some information for you that breaks down call volume, back-to-back calls, uh, and kind of the, the philosophy behind moving forward with that third rescue unit. In addition to the rescue calls, those additional firefighters not only are responding on EMS calls, but they're also responding on fire and rescue calls. And it all comes down to I S O ratings, or, which keeps our insurance costs down for residents in Boulder City, is there's a certain criteria that we meet in our ability to respond to those type of calls. And by adding these three personnel, it will ensure that those insurance costs and those insurance rates will, can stay low in the city by, we're increasing our ability to respond to those type of emergencies. Currently, we have six personnel on duty, and when we go to a structure fire and/or a major incident that is labor-intensive, it's very difficult for us to fill all those roles in that situation. And that is why we call for mutual aid quickly from our partners in Henderson, but it still takes them a little while to get here. So in an effort to keep our insurance rates low, to make sure we continue to serve our community, that is why we're requesting those three personnel, and we are keeping it budget-neutral.
And, and I do appreciate all that, Chief. I know it's been some time, but we had talked about many of these factors before. I understand it's a not, a new issue. I guess what I'm getting at is, although I understand we're here, and the roadways that are around us are here as well, uh, it's more of a political situation where we may have the ability to go to these other levels of government and say, "Look, that you, this was the tipping point, I-11 was the tipping point." We do have a situation, I believe, where the conservation, desert conservation area was established, and the county funded a police officer position for that. So that's the type of thing that I'm referring to, that we may be able to look to these other levels of government and say, "You can't keep creating infrastructure around us and making us responsible for that. If they're creating this other infrastructure, then we may need to look to them for assistance and how we are able to service that."
Sure.
That was my point on it. But I think getting some numbers, especially on those back-to-back calls, that would be something that could be used to show them why there's a need that wasn't there before.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you. Regarding the city attorney's office, um, you know, the person that you have there now seems to be doing an outstanding job. One of the reasons that the contract that was issued to you, however, was done, was that you were going to be able to fulfill a number of requirements for the city, and here we are adding an additional person or additional responsibilities to an existing, uh, situation. If we were to, uh, create this assistant city attorney position, would there then be a need for a clerical person or a staff person to perform those other functions that are currently being performed by that person now?
Yes, we would keep that paralegal position open, um, and is, has been stated, uh, during the presentations, the, the caseload ebbs and flows. The city attorney's office is an essential part of, of that caseload. Uh, and so as we see those, uh, staffing requirements, uh, increase with the municipal court, um, that, that same burden is on the city attorney's office. And, and so, um, we, we, there's a symbiotic relationship there.
But we have a separate person for handling court issues, right? Mr. Booker?
Mr. Booker handles our, our prosecutions, correct. Um, and so this is looking forward, uh, down the road. Mr. Booker has done that for over thirteen years, I believe. Um, and, and that's, uh, he has, uh, um, I believe, closed down his private practice, he used to have a private practice, so he's now doing this and, and, uh, in the drug court exclusively. So looking down the road, um, he's not gonna do that, that, that forever. We have an opportunity here with in-house, uh, to fill that position going forward, and so that's where I talk about the possibility of this going budget-neutral, um, because there, there is the potential that, uh, we can fill that prosecutorial services in-house, instead of contracting out. And so when I came on, we had a separate, um, uh, position, very similar to Gary Booker's position, that, that I filled, uh, prior to, um, being appointed as the city attorney. That was, uh, purely civil, uh, matters, uh, and, and that, that was, again, a, a similar position to what Mr. Booker has. When I came on as the city attorney, I assumed all those, um, responsibilities and have done so, um, and will going into the future. Now, with this new position, uh, can that position help on both sides of it? Yes, there is the possibility for that.
Well, again, I'm, what I'm getting back to is, when you became the highest-paid employee in, in the city's history, the, the reason stated for doing so is that, that would take care of all of our needs, and here we are discussing adding, uh, a, a whole new position in the office, uh, you know, are you willing to renegotiate your contract?
And I don't believe that's a correct statement, uh, Councilman McManus. There's always the need within the city attorney's office to outsource, uh, litigation, and that's always been the case with the city attorney's office. That's never changed, and, and that representation wasn't made at the time that I negotiated my contract. The representation that was made was that the position that I held, uh, as, as an assistant city attorney, much like Gary Booker's, would come in-house, and that indeed happened. And there was a savings that, that was associated, uh, with that, and that will continue in the future. But there still is a need to retain outside, um, legal representation in professional service within the city attorney's office. That's true in any city attorney's office.
Well, I guess then, what I would like to see is the same type of request I've made of the other departments, that we see something over time, as far as the, the workload and the cost. If outside counsel was being used, we, we should have a picture of what our legal expenses for the city are, and I think that would then allow us to have a much better idea of what the needs are, uh, rather than just saying, "Well, we need another person." So I, that would be my suggestion to you, is to provide the council with a breakdown, perhaps over a five-year period. How much were we paying for outside counsel? How much were we paying the city attorney? How much were we paying contract, uh, attorneys like Mr. Booker or yourself? To give us a picture of what the expenses are, and also how much of that, if any, is being covered by the court fees and fines that are, uh, coming into the court.
And we're, we're happy to provide that information, but, but here, here's, here's the rub, if you will, here's the issue with legal services. I don't have a crystal ball. I, I, I don't know when we're gonna be sued, by whom we're gonna be sued.
But I think that's-
And a lot of, and a lot of the, those budgetary issues come as a result of those risks that are out there. Now, we do our best to reduce risk, to reduce the city's liability. That, that is my job as city attorney, is to reduce those risks. But I don't have a crystal ball to say that next week, we may not be sued by someone, and we have to hire those services.
That's not my expectation that you would have a crystal ball. My expectation is that if we look over a period of time, that at least gives us some idea. The other, uh, aspect of that is, we have PoolPak. We pay a lot of money to PoolPak for insurance coverage. So some of these things, uh, that would come to the city, if it was to be some unexpected, uh, lawsuit that was brought against us, that's also the reason we pay for insurance coverage.
Absolutely.
Is to have that ability to say, if a large expense comes up, they will come and assist us in doing that. So what I'm asking for, again, is some type of timeframe where we can get an idea of what our legal expenses have been.
And we do provide a report from PoolPak from all those matters that, that, that there is coverage under that policy. Uh, and is, is everyone that has experienced litigation, and, and especially, especially claims that are covered by insurance, those claims are tendered to PoolPak, uh, and, and that's part of our, our, uh, coverage. Uh, and, and there's a report that's, uh, submitted each year that provides those cases where PoolPak is covering those claims. But each and every year, we have claims that fall outside of that coverage, where we make that determination.
And that's what I'm asking for, is if we could get an idea of what that looks like over a five-year period, it might give the council a sense of why another person would be needed.
We'd be happy to do that.
Why we now need an assistant city attorney.
You bet.
Thank you.
You bet.
Back to the number crunching. On the golf courses, uh, when we go into the breakdowns of the golf courses, uh, not what was included in the executive summary, but in the line item breakdown, for both courses, the majority of the expense is summarized under a entry called technical expense? I, I know you would like a page reference, but...
I believe that's the contract with, um, the, the golf course management.
Well, there's a, there's a different charge for, uh...
Well, there's also the, um-
Professional services.
Maintenance, there's, there's also maintenance, too. We have the golf course maintenance contract.
Turf tech, which is the golf course maintenance.
Turf tech.
We have the contract with the golf manager.
When we look at the pie chart breakdown, um, you do break it down in there, professional services, uh, things like cart rentals and green seeds and all that, but when we look at the line item entries, there's just this one big figure for both courses of technical expense.
Well, in both courses, turf tech does the maintenance on both courses, okay? So if you look at the Boulder City municipal, uh, budget, you'll see a line item for turf tech as a golf course maintenance item. Uh, then they have a contract with the golf manager, which we just renegotiated, and that's Andy Shaper, and he's the golf manager or golf director for both golf courses, so you have a, a contract there as well. And so that, uh, I believe that those are put into the same, uh, the category.
Okay, and specific page number, I got lucky here, uh, seventy-one of the packet for the municipal course. It lists the, uh, professional, uh, budget amount at two hundred thousand, and then a, a figure of six hundred thousand for technical.
That's the golf course maintenance.
So that's like mowing the grass and...
Repairing, um, bunkers and things like that.
The, uh, golf course maintenance contract deals with, uh, maintaining golf course. That includes overseeding, fertilization, repair of irrigation system, mowing the grass, doing the bunkers, cleaning the trees, all, all maintenance items included with, with the, the maintenance of a golf course.
Okay, uh, again, all I would ask then is to change that word from technical to landscape, course maintenance, just to make it clear what that is, because we have other things in there, uh, listed for maintenance facilities, equipment, vehicles, grounds.
During my presentation on the finance position and some of the goals for the year, um, that's one of the goals, is to try to get uniform accounting descriptions for all the accounts throughout the city, and that, again, is very labor-intensive, and when I have the proper staffing, we're gonna start looking at that.
And, again, I do appreciate it, it's just when I look at the numbers within something like that, um, you know, it could be anything.
Those are large numbers.
They are. And I do appreciate that it is labor-intensive to break all that out. Another question I have, uh, is regarding the airport. There were, there was discussion last year about, and I guess this would be more to Mr. City Manager, uh, discussions about obtaining funding for a control tower, uh, extending the one or more of the runways. I need an idea of what the plan is there at the airport. We have a situation with these leases coming up, uh, their expiration dates coming up for some of the general aviation people that have hangars down there. Uh, there seems to be some type of plan, uh, because of the desire to get a control tower. I believe that, uh, the fire chief had, uh, talked about plans of a fire station, uh, being put down there. I, I would like to know what it is we're looking at for the airport. Are we looking at some sort of major expansion there? You know, why do these projects keep looking at doing that? And, uh, although it's part of the question, I think it's a separate question, what does this mean for the general aviation flyers at the airport? Are, are they getting squeezed out? Uh, you know, what, what's happening at the airport? What, is there a general plan, a master plan for what's happening there?
Councilmember, thank you for the question. Yes, there is a master plan, it was already presented to the council, uh, in this last year. In addition to that, there's also a consultant that just finished a report that I have yet to read, 'cause it's in my mailbox, I just received it in the last day or two, that specifically addresses the general aviation and the, uh, hangar lease concerns that have come up from time to time. Um, in the capital, uh, in the capital improvement plan, there are a number of airport projects that are funded by the federal government through grants. That includes taxiway, uh, improvements and, uh, expansions or, uh, extensions, as well as, uh, the, um, air traffic control. That is actually a capital, uh, funded item, and then ultimately, uh, once that does get built, I believe it's the federal government that will be, um, uh, funding the employees that would actually run the air traffic control tower. That specifically does not necessarily impact general aviation in terms of, um, structures that we have out there currently. Uh, however, this report that I have yet to review, uh, does address very specifically some of the lease issues that have come up over the last years, certainly that I've been here, and I think it's been going on for, uh, some time now. Uh, so, uh, once I'm able to review that, uh, then we'll be coming forward, I suppose, with some recommendations based on, uh, the consultant's findings and their recommendations on how to move forward.
Thank you, and, and again, my concern with this is, um, there seems to be a lot of planning by different people that are involved with airport operations, and I'm not sure that that's involving the community. And when we look at anything happening at that airport, I think we need to involve the community, there are a lot of folks that live down in that area, and I'm not sure that their interests are being represented in whatever is happening.
I duly noted, but I, I will also remind the council that you have an airport advisory committee who, uh, is appointed by the council, who are representatives of the community, particularly those representatives that have an interest in aviation. I would hope that they, in fact, are going out and reaching out, uh, to the community and getting input, uh, to, uh, assess with advising staff on how to move forward.
Well, again, a, a specific requirement of anybody to be on that committee is that they have aviation experience.
That's correct.
So they're looking at it from one point of view, and not necessarily the- So they're looking at it from one point of view and not necessarily the residents' point of view. I think I even heard recently, this was somebody making a suggestion about perhaps a cargo terminal at the airport. I don't know that that's representative of what our airport should look like, and that's why I think that's important to do. And the folks that serve on that committee, I'm not sure that they're the best representatives of the community at large. They're supposed to be representative of the airport community.
And again, I'm not, having not been here when the master plan was updated and proposed, I know that there was a number of meetings that were held, but I don't know to what extent the public was invited or involved. But I do know that there were a number of meetings that were held. So unfortunately, the manager is no longer with us, but maybe perhaps other staff might be able to provide that information.
And I had attended those meetings, and again, they're the type of meetings that usually occur where the people who have a specific interest are the ones that attend and participate, whereas the rest of the community is going about their lives and don't realize that things are being done that they may or may not agree with. So that's my suggestion there, is that we make a determination of what the future of that airport is supposed to look like, and we get input from the community, and not just meetings that are held once a quarter by committees that are required to be involved in the aviation community.
Okay.
And at least for this meeting, I think that's all I have for right now.
If I may just add one more thing, Councilmember McManus, you know, I do want to make sure that you and the rest of the council do realize that the staff does recognize that, you know, you specifically, but I think council as a whole has made it known that we would like to see how the revenues and different categories of revenues, how they're being utilized. The position that is being proposed in this budget, the budget manager, would in fact be able to do that very thing, and that is to create, in financial terms, chart of accounts and to name those different line items, you know, so that we all can understand and speak the same language, but also monitor revenues coming in. Much as, you know, much governments, you see a treasurer's office. Treasurer is the one that takes in the revenues and manages and makes sure that those revenues are going where they need to go. And then you have the accounting side that, you know, expends those revenues and, you know, sends the bills out and whatnot. We all had that under one position here, and it's created some issues and problems and concerns. And so by, you know, in essence, having an accountant manager and also a budget manager, then it separates those two. So where there's a clear review of money coming in, how that's being divvied out, and then how those expenses are occurring on the other side and how we're paying those bills. So that's why it's important for us to get that position on board, because we clearly do want to see and be able to communicate to the council and to the community how those revenues are coming in and where those revenues are actually going and what they're specifically funding. Currently today, you know, I do believe our financial system can do that. It's a matter of, you know, getting the staff with the skill sets to be able to actually develop the proper chart of accounts and do the thing called project and program management and financial oversight, so that we can clearly follow those dollars all the way through.
And I do appreciate that. I know last year, we added another person to the finance department. When I was first elected and went to visit with the finance department prior to Mrs. Pelletier starting, and looked around and said, "Really? You're all doing this? All four of you are doing $70 million worth of management here?" That simply wasn't enough. And again, the work that Mrs. Pelletier, and I know Mr. Noyle, you as well, have done to make this much more understandable has been outstanding. So I get that. This stuff ain't easy. So I appreciate the effort.
Thank you.
Mr. Haray. I've got a few observations and questions. First off, am I correct in thinking that the last budget that we saw, there were actually the general fund and the utility fund? And it wasn't broken down by the various utilities? Is that correct?
Yes.
So this is the first time we really had a good look individually, so we could track these utilities, which is, I think, long overdue. The other question I had was, in the addenda sheet here, the wages are listed for each of the classes of city employees. My question is, are these fully burdened numbers? Do they include all the benefits? Or are they just the base numbers?
They're just the base numbers. They don't include...
They're just the base numbers.
Okay, so is it possible to get a burden number? Dollar amount, is that a...
Councilmember Haray, could you explain where exactly are you looking at? Because I know that some of these slides did include the fully burdened numbers.
Well, I was just trying to get the true cost. In regards to that area, the thing that stands out the most to me regarding this proposed budget is the increase in number of employees. Now, I understand that this is done by rearranging the funds within the department or making some machinations to keep the number the same, although the employee count was increasing. However, the perception is, I believe among the general population, is the fact that we're hiring all these people. And in fact, like, looking back into the history, one of the rationales that I've given is the fact that we've attempted to reach parity with our 2009 number. And we're at that level now. But just doing some simple math on the thing, from last year to the proposed budget coming in the future, it's about a 15% increase in our employee count. And our employee count is projected to be 13 over the 2009 parity number. And that raises some concerns, and I think it's a fair question to ask. Over that period of time, there's a 15% increase in employees. Have the citizens of Boulder City enjoyed a 15% increase in the quality or level of services? And that's a rhetorical question, so I don't expect an answer. But I know that that's a, that is a question that is circulating through people's minds. I'd like to know what percentage of our employees, the actual line workers, how many of those in a percentage are covered by a collective bargaining agreement?
Almost 70%.
I don't need the answer today, but I think it would be helpful to know the, I know we're about a 2% to 3% increase, and I just wondered how we got that number. Was part of it from the collective bargaining process?
Yes.
I know that our fire and police are represented by collective bargaining, and I believe some others are as well, just as a point of information.
And Mayor, or Councilmember Haray, just to be clear, that the increase being proposed, the 2.3%, is just the COLA for the employees. The total actual increase in salaries and benefits is a total of 3%? Because the city still is obligated to pay the .625% increase into PERS?
Yes.
So that is a total of 3% is already built into the budget. So when we say the net increase to our employees in terms of their actual cost of living increase, and, you know, money in their pockets, so to speak, that's the 2.325% or, I'm trying to remember all these numbers.
Another question, in the budget presentations, with the prices or the amounts of the total cost, are those the total burden costs with the overhead?
Yes, sir. That would include as many costs as I could associate with those positions. Uniform cost, benefit cost, workers' comp cost, yes.
So these are the numbers that we can expect to see actually being paid out?
Yes, sir. That would be the estimated cost of those positions.
Again, getting back to the employees, it appears that the bulk of the employees for next year are going into Public Works. And what I would like to see is, and really, I know it's not part of the budget, but it's part of explaining why these numbers are there, is I'd like to see a paragraph basically justifying with a job description and why these jobs are necessary, why we don't have the capabilities at present with our present staffing levels. And I think that goes for each of the departments, but Public Works is the biggest number out of the total. The, why I'm kind of concentrating on this is that from the numbers in the budget, 41% of our general fund is for employee salaries. And so that's the biggest, usually you go to the biggest place to see if you can make the adjustments, so that's why I've kind of concentrated on that. And that also goes to the court, you know, the marshal. I understand you explained it regarding the need for a full-time marshal and the fact that we lose them for other reasons. I know that our fire department also has had the reputation of being a training grounds for the folks over in the valley for their fire departments. Let's see. In your slide, Roger, for the Parks and Rec, one of the jobs listed was the irrigation system for the golf course that's going to be redone. I just wonder if, do both golf courses use our raw water? And if not, why not?
That's a good question. I know Boulder Creek uses raw water, okay? Boulder City, the raw water is concentrated at El Camino, and I know Dennis and I talked about it a couple of weeks ago, and I'm sure he's looking into the possibility of putting Boulder Muni on raw water as well. So right now, Muni's on potable and Boulder Creek is on raw.
Yeah, I know from the standpoint of replacing the irrigation system, that obviously means some landscaping is going to be replaced. And if the landscaping is the driving factor for potable water, maybe that should be an area that, I'm, I have, I have a black thumb, so I'm not speaking with any level of knowledge.
Well, Dennis and I, Dennis is going to be coming to our meetings, golf course meetings that we have once a month with our maintenance people and the golf manager, because we are planning out how we're going to do this without affecting the revenue on the municipal golf course. I think it's very important to replace the existing system at Muni right now, because we're wasting a ton of water because of the design. It's a 1970s design. You turn on the water, if you have a water, a dry spot on number one fairway, you're watering, when you turn on that row of sprinklers, you're watering number five, number one, and number two. And so you get rid of the dry spot, but you're, you know, there's seven or eight heads that are operating at the same time. So the new system is a valve and head system where you can control the individual head. If you have a dry spot on the middle of number one fairway, you go to the nearest sprinkler, look at the number on the computer, put that in, and only that head comes on. So you're wasting, you're saving a whole amount of water in that regard.
Well, I'm not a golfer, but I am a cheapskate, so it's a...
This is a good move on the city's part, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see. Oh, in the, one of these graphs here, I thought what would be helpful is, you had a graph that showed, a bar graph, the revenues versus expenditures? Let me see if I can find this. It's a, it's a bar graph, red and green, showing, that's it, there we go. Of course, this is for the general fund. I wonder if it's possible to have something similar to that for the blended utility funds to show revenue versus expenditures?
So you want us to put them back together and do that?
Just for the purpose of the graph, that's all. Not, no, I don't want, no, I prefer to have the separate accounting for each utility.
It was an intricate operation separating them. But yes, we can do that, we can do that.
Yeah, I think it would be too confusing to have each, and plus the fact there's no historical data for it being broken down. See, in order to have an honest comparison, you have to re-blend it for that purpose only. But it's just for information.
Yes.
And that's the extent of my questions, Dave.
Hey, Councilmember Levitt.
Thank you. I think a lot of my questions have been answered, so I just have maybe a couple more and for clarification. But I too want to thank Diane and all of those who've worked so hard on this budget and for all the information that we received. So, great job, everyone. Thank you very much. My reaction in reading this over the weekend, or whenever we received, I can't remember, was I think similar to probably everybody on the council, is, whoo, eyes bugging out at all these new positions. So it's, I think it's important for people to realize the work and effort that went into making so many of these positions budget-neutral and how that was done. I guess one of my questions, and I don't know, Diane, if you're the one to answer this or the city manager, is, and I know in these, maybe not in the one document that Councilman Haray just said, but I know in these slides that were presented, the benefits, the salaries and benefits were included, the total cost of the employees. So I understand that they can be budget-neutral because of the outsourcing that's done now and the amount of money that is, that it costs to contract out this work, which is a lot of money, and bringing this in-house can save money. But I'm wondering, over the long haul, the sustainability of that. So I don't know who can speak to that, because that is, in every organization that I've worked with, salaries is the biggest chunk of the budget, it always is, because that's your biggest expense. So I think there's a compelling case here for how this can be budget-neutral, but is that sustainable over the long haul, I guess is my question.
So let me take a stab at that. As the departments reviewed each of their particular budgets, their charge was to find the recurring revenues, and it's, that's an important word, recurring revenues. So it's revenues that are in the budget year after year after year, because labor is a recurring expense, year after year after year. So we wanted to make sure that we found those recurring revenues in the budget that would be able to be reduced sufficiently enough to be able to cover the expense of a position if you bring that particular service in-house. And that's exactly what the staff did, was when they went out, they looked at their particular budgets, and they didn't bring their particular line items. Let me just pick on HVAC as an example. They didn't bring that line item to zero under contracting out, if you will. What they did was they looked at, you know, what would it take to do a full-time HVAC position, but leave... position, but leave sufficient amount of money still in that particular line item of outsourcing? Because at the end of the day, you still have to buy equipment, you have to buy certain supplies that currently may be the contractor is paying, you know, paying for, which we're paying their cost plus an overhead cost for them to manage and purchase and that sort of thing. So, they were charged with looking at that, but leaving enough money still in that particular line item to take care of the equipment and any recurring kinds of things. In addition to that, you know, we also wanted to be realistic and to say that just because you bring one particular position or a function in-house doesn't necessarily mean that you don't contract ever out, because there may be some extraordinary, you know, specialized skill that you, you know, don't have in-house that you still would need to contract out for. So there was still enough revenues left or enough money left on that particular line item to ensure that we still can cover unforeseen things going forward. So, you know, this budget was built upon a reduction in certain line items, but not to the point where it is completely 100% in-house. But it's sufficiently enough that it would fund a position, and therefore, there is some, you know, synergistic effect by having an in-house person doing those kinds of functions, because when they're not exactly doing just HVAC, they could be doing, for example, a facilities project that may actually include HVAC and extending a particular HVAC versus us going out and contracting it as a minor capital project.
Thank you. And I understand the rationale behind it. I like the fact that if it's in-house, we have more control over it and we can account for the costs, and there's just more accountability if it's in-house, and I understand it. But we're also creating a position that has to be sustained over a long period of time. And so I think you have to weigh both those factors. And I don't know if this is the correct time to say it, but one of the things I thought, where are you going to put all these people? I mean, I understand some are reclassified and some, you know, I understand that, but I know we're doing space studies right now, but that's a significant increase in the employees, so I assume...
That's always a good problem to have. The reality is, is that we do believe that there's enough space within, you know, the city facilities to house any additional employees that may come from this budget request.
Okay. And I, and I know this has been mentioned by, I think, at least all the other council members, I'm not sure, but the budget manager position, and you explained that a little better, and because we have hired new people in the finance department, and I'm just wondering if this position also then will allow for a lot more of this transparency that's being called for with respect to where the lease revenues are going and how we're accounting for the money that's coming in and where it's being allocated and all of that.
Not only will it allow for us to be able to do that, but as you just heard me talk about, you know, in essence, restructure how we go about doing the budget. It's called the chart of accounts, and how we go for accounting of, you know, the revenues coming in and the expenditures going out. In addition to that, this particular position will also be able to, real-time, be looking at the expenditures, how we're tracking in terms of throughout the year on our expenditure side to make sure that we're not going above our budget. But also, because it's in the budget portion, that they could actually, this individual could actually do a lot of studies for us in terms of fiscal analysis, cost-benefit analysis, you know, whether something should be outsourced versus in-source, that sort of thing. So it will allow for additional skill sets so that we don't have to go out and hire, you know, third parties to do that, that type of work.
Okay. And I also had a question with respect to the city attorney's budget. I, I guess I'm confused with respect to the full-time position. Is that Gary Booker's position or your paralegal's position?
So, the new full-time position would be Gary Booker's, what he is currently doing as a, is the contract prosecutor. So, what we would be doing is, if everything goes according to plan, in six months, that we would fund that new position, and then there would be a transition period there where that new deputy city attorney would take over those prosecutorial responsibilities.
Well, I just wondered, because you mentioned about your paralegal, you know, passing the bar, so it isn't her position.
Well, it would be, the position that we're asking is a new position that would, a new full-time position that would be created. In that new full-time position, in the future, there wouldn't be a need for a contract prosecutorial position, because that full-time position would be covering those responsibilities.
I'm hard on getting this.
So, Gary Booker is currently our contract...
He is our contract prosecutor.
Part-time.
Part, yes.
And this new position would be full-time and replace Gary's eventually.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, man.
Sorry, I didn't make that clear. And then the, the paralegal position would be kept open as well, but that, that's a current position, so the new position would just be the deputy.
Okay, thank you. So, let's see. I know that, I personally haven't heard from anyone yet, but I know that there will be a lot of questions in the community when we're talking about all these new, new positions. So I think it is incumbent upon all of us to be able to have the information to explain them and the rationale behind them and the, how they're being funded. But I think it's also incumbent on our city staff, assuming these are approved by council, which we don't know at this point, is that the residents of Boulder City can see the impact of having these new staff. Because I know that, at least those of us working in City Hall already see a dynamic of improved services in so many ways. But this is, these are things that have been needed for a long time. So I think there needs to be a correlation that is seen in our community with respect to the level of services that are offered to our residents.
Mayor Plutim, thank you for that comment. In fact, you know, we tell, you know, through telepathy, I kind of picked that up from you months ago, and there were two positions specifically that were created in this last budget cycle. One was the contracts manager position, and the other one, I'm sure he's downstairs doing purchasing, there's a purchasing manager position. And I have tasked all the directors that have new positions in this last budget to start tracking, you know, quantitatively what those savings or what those position has done in terms of savings. Already in the contracts manager position, there is a number of revenue increases that because of our negotiating tactics has increased, you know, in essence, our, you know, our return from the solar fields. And also the purchasing manager, just within the first week or two, had taken on the, I think it was the fire truck, and instead of going out and doing a competitively bid, where it's likely that the truck would have come in substantially higher, because of his knowledge, was able to tag on to an existing government contract at a substantially reduced rate, you know, than what we expected to come in on the fire truck. So these are the kinds of things that we will be tracking, because we do want to report back to the council and the community, you know, what it is that these new positions do bring and how that, you know, in a very quantifiable sense, shows how we are impacting, impacting the effectiveness of these positions in terms of, you know, utilization of these public dollars.
And I have just one last comment I forgot was, and I know Councilman Schuman mentioned this, but the studies, I, I, in, I am in agreement with having these studies done, because I think these, the projects that are listed under this budget item are ones that we do need to know where we stand at this point. I think every one of them is essential, and that in the long run, again, will help us better direct our resources to where they need to be spent. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. All right. I have, I have to go to do Meals on Wheels at about a quarter after, so I'm going to buzz through this quickly. Again, I appreciate everybody's preparation for this. I think there were a lot of questions, not only by the public, but certainly by me and other council members going into the process, and today's presentations have clarified a lot of things. I think there are perceptions out there, when you see a lot of these new positions, that need to be answered to the public. Certainly, as public officials, that's our responsibility, so staff, you're going to need to help us answer those questions, and obviously, we'll have questions for you going forward, make sure we're justifying doing that. I, so, at the start of the presentation, it said there's four full-time employers, employees that are not budget neutral. So can you, Diane, can you just recapitulate which ones those are? I think there was...
It's two police officers, the budget manager, and the historic preservation officer.
Okay. Thank you. And then some of those other ones that were repurposed, there is some budget increase, but we're saying we're either expecting to cover those by increased revenues or by reimbursements or other things like that.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, well, I'm going to go through just some of these department areas real quickly. Public Works, I appreciate the fact that we're doing a roadways assessment, I think, in the street maintenance supervisor position. That's an area where we don't seem to be able to keep up with the dollars, dollar amount, and I don't really know the solution to that, but I know we get RTC dollars to do a lot of that. But it seems like, you know, we do one major street if we're lucky a year, and little tiny, you know, side streets, a few of them, and that costs millions and millions of dollars just to do that. And I appreciate the fact that it's a lot of money. I don't, I assume that hiring this position and doing, you know, doing, looking at the roadway assessment is going to help us to try to figure out how to better do that. It's going to require dollars, but I can just see this roads problem turning into something similar to our electric utility problem, as far as infrastructure goes. If we don't get on top of it, it doesn't seem like it's sustainable over time to just do one major street and a couple of half-streets a year. I mean, we got to find a way, and so, you know, that's the, you know, that's the bad news side, but we don't want to keep kicking that can. And I'm not saying we have been kicking the can, we've been doing what we can, but it's something that we need to bring to the forefront and figure out. And so I appreciate the fact that we are doing that. We're going to have to find dollars to do it. Because I, you know, I had a discussion with a citizen the other day, you know, my, my street has, you know, asphalt that's missing on it and potholes and things like that, and I have to agree, you know, that, and I ride my bike around town, and you know, some of the streets like Buchanan in Wyoming have cracks that are that thick in it. And so, you know, I appreciate the fact that we can't be perfect on that, but we, it is, it is a real issue. It's another thing to add to our long-term capital needs that we're really going to have to address going forward. And if we can't get the help from the outside, which I hope we can, then we're going to have to figure out a way to do it internally. As far as Public Works goes, you are adding a lot of new positions, and I think you justified it very well in, in the presentation. We get some emails, we get some discussions out in the public, and there's, you know, there's sort of a perception sometimes when we're saying we're doing really well financially, that somehow we're flushing funds, and therefore, you know, why are we hiring all these, you know, new positions? Are we just taking these dollars that we have just perceptively sitting in a, in a pot and just hiring these people just to lean on their shovel? I mean, that's the perception, it's not necessarily the reality. But, you know, the other side of it, we see from year to year where we have all these capital projects, and, you know, for instance, on the utility side, we're being told that we can only do so much every year, because, you know, we can't possibly do more than $8 to $10 million a year, and we just don't have the resources to do that internally. And so there's sort of this dichotomy between perceptions of, you know, leaning on the shovel versus we're spread too thin, and I think we need to do a better job of educating the public on that. I know, again, communication's always the toughest thing that we do, but it's a real perception, and perception becomes reality to people. And so we need to figure out how we can better educate them on that. I hope that those that are having these perceptions out there are watching, you know, today's presentation, that goes a long way. But the truth is, most people won't, and they'll still continue to have these perceptions if we don't find better ways to educate them. Utilities Department, I, I agree with the statement that we, I think we have been focusing on our transmission side. We need to dive deeper now into our distribution side. It's one thing to say we're going to do these global projects to get them up to speed, and it's been important, and we are working on those and will be for years to come, but, but again, the public sees, you know, what hap, how's it affecting me personally? How is it affecting my home? You know, my power still goes out on July, you know, the 16th or whatever. So how, you know, when is it going to get down to the, you know, the individual level where we're, all these major system upgrades are also, you know, reducing the power outages and things like that? And so, I think that all these assessments you're talking about, on the condition of our different utilities, including the distribution side on, on the electrical, are really important. And I, I want to reiterate what the city manager said in response to Councilman Schuman. I think it's, I think we can always say that our utility fund has, at least as long as I've been on city council, as far as the operations side goes, you know, if you break out the different utilities, they aren't all equal. But operations is one thing, and if you just looked at operations, utility revenues have pretty much always paid for operations side of things, the billing and all of that. But the real issue that's always been a problem, since I've been on council at least, is the fact that, you know, these infrastructure needs that we have, and if you forget the infrastructure side of things, then you're forgetting not only $10 million in problems, but hundred, you know, over $100 million in problems that we always need to keep in mind. And I think that's what the city manager was getting at, is you can't just look at it in a vacuum on the operations side, you need to look at the, at the capital side, at the infrastructure side. And so, again, we need to continue to keep that at the forefront and remind ourselves we are doing that now with our, our role in capital improvement plan. But again, we need to get that out to the public so they recognize, you know, what the needs are, and that includes the roadways that I just spoke about. On police, it's, it's great. I think you said we're saving $20,000 from last year, asking for more positions though on the police officers. And I think, again, the whole mar cops situation, you know, and what's required there, we've gotten money for it, but it also requires the positions in place, and I think the public needs to, to better understand, you know, that mar cops dynamic and what's, you know, what money are, we are getting for it, what's required, how that's going to affect us going forward, because that's in flux as well, too. So, again, I'm, I'm pointing out a lot of things, I think, that are education challenges, education outreach challenges, but I think they're important to, to help with this transparent process of the budget, because we are becoming more transparent. But when you become more transparent, you also raise a lot of questions, and, and it is a lot to get your arms around, as Councilmember McManus has pointed out, especially in a, you know, in a short period of time. And so, we need to keep doing better at that. I think Chief Nicholson answered a lot of Mr. McManus's questions, so I won't go... I think Chief Nicholson answered a lot of Mr. McManus's questions, so I won't go too deep into the fire at this point. Finance, again, I, I believe the budget manager position's necessary. I think, in the interest of transparency, making it more transparent year by year, we're not perfect yet, we're getting better at it. I've heard lots of requests from all the council members to, you know, dial in more deep, dive in more deeply, and make it more apparent to the public that we are, you know, where, where our dollars are going, where our revenues are being spent, including the solar lease revenues, and so, that's gonna help us to be more efficient. I think you justified the, the need for that. Parks and Rec, appreciate that we've cut 150,000 out of the budget, and that you're repurposing to save money, Mr. Hall. We heard your presentation last night, and I, you know, just direct the public to that presentation as well as further justification for some of these projects you're proposing, and what, you know, what we're doing with Parks and Rec to make it more efficient. In community development, I do think that, you know, one of the four major positions that isn't budget neutral is one to really highlight, and that's the new historic preservation officer, manager, director, whatever we're gonna call it. I know that's a big-ticket item at 145,000 dollars, but I, but that's one of our top five priorities in our new strategic plan, is historic preservation, and I think it's important, as we're fleshing out that plan, that we have somebody that's dedicated solely to that process. So, to me, that's a no-brainer position. I can't speak to the actual salary, I can only assume that that's, you know, that's justified. I know we're competing to get, you know, the best kind of person in there, and that's, that's what we always have to look at. So, I applaud that, would definitely ask my colleagues to approve that position, because I think that's, of all the, of all the positions, that one really focuses most heavily on our strategic plan, and what the whole community's told us they wanna do there. I think the justification's been provided for the, the full-time city marshal to replace up to, or at least three, I think it was said, at least three time, three part-time marshals. You know, again, we always wanna see results, as, you know, and that remains to be seen, but, you know, we do, I think it's true at the corps, it's true at the police department, it's true at the fire department, that we're, we're constantly competing, as Councilman Harha said, with what's going on over the hill, and you have to have, you can't just have this constant transciency with employees where there's turnover, you need consistency there, and that, that actually costs us a lot of dollars when there's continual turnover, and, and it, we have to retrain, and, and so, I, I think that that's the right thing to do. I'm just looking forward to results in the future there, of course. Mr. City Manager, you said at the start, first thing you said is we've lost 200,000 dollars. Never say that when you're talking about, talking about budget, you clarified the fact that you saved, or you've reduced by 200,000 dollars, but that's good. I, I like the fact that you wanna create a new department that's the communications and government affairs. We were recently up in Carson City, I think, highlighted to me the fact that we need to be more active in government affairs, not just at the state level, but in our, in the regional and national level, and that will help us to do that. Communicating with the public, of course, is always top priority, but communicating with our, everyone around us, our, our counterparts in the different government levels is, is always important, and it helps Boulder City to get these outside dollars. They need to know we're, you know, that we're not just this small sleepy community that's doing nothing. We need to fight for those dollars and make sure they understand how important Boulder City is to the regional economy, the state economy, the national economy, and I think that will help us to do that. Again, just circling back on these increase of, you know, you see 13 full-time equivalent in, equivalent position increases, and that's the number, I mean, when you're in the public, that's the number you're focusing on, right? You're just seeing, you're seeing 13 new positions, or the equivalent of 13 new positions, and the public wants justification for that, and so, if they watch today, they'll get a lot of that justification, but we need to, we need to help them understand why 13, and the fact that a lot of these are budget neutral, or they're going to increase efficiencies that will help us to be budget neutral, as Councilwoman Levitt has said, sustainable into the future, because it's one thing to hire 'em now, and I agree with her comment on that. You can make it budget neutral today, but if it's not budget neutral next year, and the year after that, then that's not real helpful. I mean, that's just looking at one year at a time, and, and so, we need to make sure that we justify that going forward as well. I appreciate the fact that you wanna hold off on doing, on paying down debt, or determining how to pay down debt until we do these studies. I just wanna reiterate that it's important that we, you know, I'm not asking for an answer today, or even, you know, next week, or next month, or anything like that, but I do believe as part of this budget process, it's important for us to look for ways to continue with being aggressive at paying down our debt. And you specifically mentioned the general fund, not wanting to take money out of the general fund to pay down debt until you've done these studies, and that's fine, but it is important to me that we continue to look for ways to pay down debt. We've done a great job of it over the last eight years that I've been on city council, reduced by 60 million dollars. We have the opportunity on the raw water line debt to do somewhere between zero and 10 million dollars more in, in interest payments that we still have left remaining there. If we are gonna do debt in the future, whether it's the pool debt or other debt, the citizens are always gonna wanna see that we have been responsible with paying down existing debt, and so, let's keep that at the forefront as we're going forward with this budget process. I won't speak to each of the study items that are being proposed. I'm, I probably have come across as an anti-study person in the past. I will qual, I, I will say that that's partly true. I'll qualify it a little bit, though, I am not necessarily anti-study, but they are big-ticket items, and if they're not done right, which I've seen multiple studies during the course of my tenure on city council, where they've come back, and, you know, the public contin, and not only the public, but some council members poke holes in them, and say, you know, why did we do it this way? Why did we spend this much money on that kind of study, and we got that garbage back from it? Well, I think in part, that's justified in a lot of those cases, and it's always about garbage in, garbage out. If you don't do the process right, if you don't tell the consultants exactly what you want, if you don't give them the information they need, if you don't direct them how to go out to the public in the right way, then you're gonna get back garbage, and if you spend 250,000 dollars to get garbage, that's never a good thing. In my mind, that's a waste of money, and so, I don't like to see that repeatedly happening. I'm not gonna specifically point to which ones, I could if, if, if you wanted to hear them, but, but it happens enough that I need, you know, I need to be able to tell the public that this is not a waste of money, that we're not just going through the motions to do these studies, and I think that they, if done right, they, they do help us to justify why we're going in one direction or another on a particular project, or on rates, or on, on whatever. So, I, I'm not opposed to them, I just wanna make sure that we, as we do them, that we're, that we're not just going through the motions, that we're really getting our money's worth out of those studies, because, you know, when you add 'em all up, it's, I don't know, I wrote down the 250,000 for the utility rate study, but it's probably a million dollars in studies that we're proposing, so it's, it's a lot of money. I appreciate you pointing out, again, that we are the lowest tax rate in all of Southern Nevada by a long shot. That's good, we need to keep it that way. Lowest utility rates by a long shot as well, we need to keep it that way. On some of Mr. McManus's comments, I do agree that we probably are gonna need another workshop. I will say this to my fellow council members between now and whenever we meet next, I mean, it's, it's our obligation, my obligation, each of your obligations, to go get the information you've requested. I will say to staff that everybody needs that information, and they need your time to be able to understand. I mean, you know, a couple of hours in a meeting never gets us to where we need to be, and so we need to do our homework in between, and so, I, I think, I tend to agree that we probably are gonna need another workshop, so let's, let's look at that, but in the interim, everybody needs to...
Well, I would just say then, Mr. Mayor, let, let's take a poll of the council here. How many of us believe we need to have another workshop, not just at a council meeting, but another meeting like this? I'm in favor of doing so.
Yeah, so, I, I think let's plan on doing that before the tentative budget, let's figure out a date, and we don't need to do that now, but you'll figure out, I'm sure. You know, Mr. McManus has requested a lot of information from different departments, and so, I would just say, you know, obviously, the fire department, there was some requests made on call times and things like that, and some other things. City attorney, I think, you know, I think it was five years request on, you know, where, where the money's coming from, how pool pack's paying for it, what the costs are, you know, what's being outsourced, and things like that. I mean, I think that's reasonable, that we hear those things from time to time, and so, all these types of things, you know, if you're not getting the information you need, you tell me, I'll help you get your information, but again, it's incumbent upon us to go get it, it's incumbent upon staff, you've heard the, the requests. Let's get that information to, to each of us. Just a quick, Mr. Harha mentioned the golf course irrigation revamp for the Muni course, and, and then, in answer to his questions, you said, so that, as far as raw water, the Muni course is not on raw water, it's on potable water. So, this project, Mr. Hall, that we're talking about, that you presented last night, is just to make it more efficient? Is that correct, in terms of how you can control things in the heads and all that?
That's, that's correct. What we wanna do is put an irrigation system in that we can manage a little bit more effectively and save water for the city, but during that process, right now is the best time to analyze if we can attach the, the golf course to a raw water system, so this is perfect timing, that's why I asked Brian to join us when we were planning for how we're gonna put this thing into effect without trying to, you know, keep the revenue up, but, but not have a decrease in revenue at the Muni course, but do it at the same time.
So, so Boulder Creek is hooked into the raw water line, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, what you'd be looking at in this process is if we could also hook in the Muni course to the raw water line?
That's correct.
And then, so the, the fact that we're putting a million gallons of wastewater out into the desert every day, that's a different problem.
That, that is a different problem, because we have two different sources of water.
Yeah.
One is more, well, let me put it this way, one is more, better to use on a golf course than the other is.
Sure, and I, right, but I know that, I'm just trying to distinguish for myself and for the public, but I know that Mr. Hanson, as past Public Works Director, had, had put on our capital, our long-term capital plan, a project to, I think it was, to retrofit the golf courses to use some of that wastewater. I know it was a huge ticket item, it was like 15 or 20 million dollars or something plus, which is why we, 16 million? I don't know, I can't remember the number, it was a lot, and, and so, that's why we put it to the end of a priority list, if at all, I mean, I know, so, go ahead.
So, Mayor and Council, with regards to that, the, I started talking to Roger about this, just because the raw water system is right next to the Boulder Municipal Course, and it's not tied to the course, so it seems to be a natural thing that either should've been done, or could be done, or maybe there's some hydraulic issues that prevented it from being done. So, that's what we need to look at, is some of those technical details with regards to making that conversion from potable to raw. There's no reason, from a regulatory perspective, that we shouldn't be able to do that, so I think that's an important part of the analysis, that needs to be completed, and this is the time to do it while they're making the conversions to the, to the irrigation system, because it could be a hydraulic issue, or you have to pump, or something like that, so we gotta figure that out.
Okay.
With regards to the effluent, the golf course, that's kind of a different question. You would certainly have to treat it to more of an advanced tertiary treatment level, higher quality, if you wanted to apply it on the golf courses. That is a major capital improvement. However, we are looking to study that and review alternatives. Clearly, that's a resource right now that's just being discharged out into the desert. It has value with regards to, what do we do? Can we put it back in the lake? Can we put it back in the river system? Can we get credit for it? It's not that much different from paying somebody $3 a square foot, taking out turf. So, that's conversations we can have with some of our regional partners, and maybe there's a solution there that brings them some other funding to upgrade the plant, or do something entirely different. So, those are options, we started those discussions, it'll take a while to, to figure out what to do with the effluent. We've also talked to a few customers, potential customers, that may take some more of the effluent, but not very much, so...
Okay.
In the long term, I think we need to really nail down what the best plan is for, what do we do with that resource.
All right, I appreciate that explanation, that helps to clarify a lot, and, yeah, and I'm not, and, and I think you're right about the, the way to put the raw water on the golf course is a lot cheaper. I, I don't wanna say that it's not important for us to look for ways to reuse our effluent, I think it is. We were using it for the I-11 for a good portion of that, Las Vegas paving was using that, but I, I think we do need to look at, you know, not putting it just into the desert, finding ways to use it in the future. There's probably a lot cheaper projects, and, and maybe projects where we can get money back by doing it in a different way, so, thank you very much on that.
You're stealing my thunder from my presentation in two weeks.
Oh, dang it. If I'd only known. All right, well, that's all I have, so, again, thank you for all your hard work on this. Budget process is always a mammoth project. I know you've been working on it since last year's budget project finished, and it's a year-round cycle now, which is something that I think we've made loud and clear over the years, I know I have. Thank you for listening to that, and making sure you're constantly working on that. Budget, once passed, shouldn't be static, we should look at it throughout the year, and let's keep doing that, so, we'll look forward to our next budget workshop, whenever that is, and thank you for being here today. Meeting adjourned.
Public.
Oh, public comment. I gotta go, but I will turn this over to Mayor Protem, Councilwoman Levitt.
Okay, we're open for public comment.
Again, Marty Reel, a longtime Boulder City resident, and a, and an old retired bookkeeper. So, I have to say that how important it is that the city knows what their costs are, and what their revenues are, and I think Ms. Pelletier has done a great job for one year of putting these budgets together, and the, and the accounting has improved. A couple of things, one of the things that was mentioned was, you know, how much it's gonna cost to make the improvements to the utility department for, because we have to keep the lights on, and when, if, when I look at the, the accounting figures for the first half of the current fiscal year that was presented in, to the council in February, the revenues over expenditures were... were $1.6 million. And to be fair, you've only spent a third of what the capital budget for this current fiscal year was. But if my memory serves me right, we also did not spend the budget for the previous budget year for all of the utilities. So I don't know what, that's holding that up. But also, I just would like to point out that the ending fund balances at the end of December for the, just the electric fund was $37.5 million, and that, that was increased by 1.3 million over what it was at, at the beginning of the year. And we have the same situation with the water, where we have a fund balance of $18 million, and that's increased from $15 million at the beginning of the current fiscal year. So I just think that if we have good accounting and Mr. Porter, who is our new utility manager, can make decisions about if we know what our utility costs are and what our utility expenses are, that we should, should be able to make good decisions about how much we need to be spending and that, do we really need to go out and spend 250 million, or yeah, $250 million, $250,000, I'm sorry, for somebody to come in here and tell us, you know, what we need to spend? I think that Dennis, if he has the proper information of what our utilities are costing us, where those, where that electric and water is coming from, and, and what we need to keep going, to spending to put the lights on, he should be able to figure that out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming this morning.